This February the eighteenth, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Markert.
I'm here.
Deputy Vice Mayor Long is absent, Vice Mayor Cassell.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
We have quorum.
I know you'd like to introduce Mr. Nguyen, I just got a little statement I'm gonna make after that regarding Robert's Rules, he's benign everybody, don't worry about it.
Yes, sir, and my brief comments are nothing more than in response to City Commission's direction to host a Robert's Rule of Order workshop training session, if you will. We were able to secure the services of Mr. Tim Nguyen, who has background and expertise relative to the subject at hand, so today, Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, from three thirty until no later than five o'clock, has been allotted for the purposes of a training exercise or orientation, if you will, with respect to Robert's Rules of Order. So with that, Mr. Tim Nguyen, W Y N N, is with us this afternoon for this purpose, and I therefore turn you over to the City Commission. Mr. Mayor.
Because this was my idea, I really want to commend all my colleagues for coming and participating in this workshop today. I think we made some good progress towards positive, respectful atmosphere up here. I think all of us have the same goal, to foster a culture of collaboration and a culture of collegiality. We want our interaction with each of us to stand as example to others. We want to look forward to our meeting as we work together to solve our problems of our town, and we want our city employees to look forward to coming to work, so that they do the best job possible in serving those we serve, the residents and business owners of our town. And to accomplish these goals, that commitment of collegiality and collaboration is to start with us. My hope is that with Robert's Rules of Order, a time-tested system of meeting administration perfected over decades, we can all commit to that culture and shift now and go forward as a body of professionals dedicated to serving our town. I really wanted to say bold to go forth, but I held myself back, so. Anyway, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you commissioners as well for having me here, and I'd like to congratulate the mayor on a great idea of having me here, always think it's good to bring me in. But my name is Tim Nguyen, and I am a professional parliamentarian, which means that I travel around the country, helping organizations of all different sizes and all different backgrounds with their meetings. The purpose of parliamentary law is to facilitate the smooth and orderly transaction of business in a meeting. And so parliamentary law in that regard is concerned primarily with two things, preserving the rights, I mean, excuse me, preserving the rules and protecting the rights of the members. So when we talk about members in a commission, we're talking about commissioners. The commissioners are the members of the body. However, as in many groups, many organizations, there are individuals who are not members of the body, who have limited rights, who have some rights, some rights to speak and to participate in some ways in the meeting. So we will delineate that a bit as we move forward, but we'll also look at the general public, you know, what rights they have in a meeting. But when we say members, keep in mind that in this case, we're talking about the commissioners. Now, I do have a slide here, which hopefully everyone can see either in front of them or on the screen. So as we move forward, participation is important here. I want to make sure we get feedback from all of the commissioners, and if you have a question that you feel that you can certainly raise your hand and ask that question. So I'm always looking for participation. So by show of hands, how many of the commissioners know how to raise their hand? Anyone? Okay, that's, okay, that's most of them. All right, so at any point, feel free to raise your hand, and that way I can recognize you and we can take a question there. Now, I may say that the answer to your question is coming up in a few slides, and that's fine, I don't mind the interruption. I never mind the interruption, because it gives me an opportunity to take a drink of water, so I always appreciate that. But as we move forward, please feel free to ask questions that pertain to your group, because that helps us to gear this training toward your actual needs, so you get the most out of it. So our first question here is a pretty simple one. Why Robert's Rules? Why do we care about Robert's Rules? And who is this Robert? Well, the Robert in Robert's Rules is Henry M. Roberts. He's General Robert. When he first created the rules in eighteen seventy-six, he was not a general, but he eventually rose to that rank of general in the U.S. Army. The reason he created Robert's Rules of Order is simply because he found a need for them. He saw that there was no codification of rules that applied to assemblies throughout the country. Instead, each assembly was doing what it thought was best. So he didn't just make up the rules. What General Robert did was he saw what was, he visited many, many, he did exhaustive, you know, searches into parliamentary law. He saw what was working for organizations and what wasn't working, and so he put all of this together based on the history of what works best for organizations. And it's important to know that it didn't stop there. Over the decades, as this has grown from eighteen seventy-six, it has always and has continually been updated with new information from things that are learned from actual real-world assemblies. So all across the world, and I mean, the entire world, members of associations are using Robert's Rules of Order, they're using parliamentary law, and they're asking questions. They go on the official Robert's Rules of Order forum, and they say, this happened in our organization, and how do we handle this? And so all of those questions and the answers to those questions, which come from experienced parliamentarians, are all combined and used to create each new edition of Robert's Rules of Order, so that it's up-to-date and as effective as possible. Now, about over eighty-five percent of organizations use Robert's Rules of Order in the United States, and in my experience, it's even higher than that. And so that's why it's important to know Robert's Rules of Order, but each organization has its own specific rules as well, so that's important to keep in mind. So as we go through this, what I want to do primarily is teach Robert's Rules of Order, but then I will highlight where there are some deviations from Robert's Rules of Order from your organization, and those deviations are fine, an organization can choose to adopt a few specific rules. But Robert's Rules of Order is seven hundred pages of rules that helps you to have the most constructive and productive meeting possible. And then you are allowed, within that framework, to adopt specific rules here and there. So an organization will adopt a handful of rules that works for them, but other than that, they rely on those seven hundred pages of Robert's Rules of Order. So keep that in mind as we go through. Now, there is a hierarchy of rules, and now, that's important to keep in mind, that any organization, including this organization, this commission, has many governing documents that apply to it. So you have to follow all of those rules, so that can be a little confusing. So I want to touch on that, you know, to start off. How do we keep all of this straight, when we have so many different sources of rules? So I'll start off with a question here. What happens when a rule in the charter, I mean, your specific charter for Delray Beach, what happens when a rule in the charter conflicts with a rule in the local rules of procedure that have been adopted? Is it A, whichever rule was adopted first governs? B, whichever rule was adopted last governs? C, the rule in the charter governs? Or D, the rule in the local rules of procedure governs? So who thinks it's A, by show of hands? Whichever rule was adopted first governs? How about B? Anybody think it's C, the rule in the charter governs? Right? We have a couple Cs. How about the rule in the local rules of procedure? Okay, and we have one there. So pretty much split, let's see what our answer is. So our answer is, the rule in the charter governs. Okay, so how do we know this, though? And how can we be sure of this? Because it's certainly a good question. Well, like I said, there's this big stack of rules that we have to go through, but because of the hierarchy, there's a place for each of these rules. So when we put them in their hierarchical order, we see something much easier to digest. We see that at the top, we have procedural rules and state statutes and federal code. So that is at the very top. What does that mean? That means it's the highest-ranking rule. If anything interferes with that, it's simply null and void. Below that, for most organizations, we have Articles of Incorporation, followed by a Constitution, bylaws, special rules of order, then the parliamentary authority in most cases is Robert's Rules of Order, and then we have standing rules. Okay, so we had this, you know, this big barrage of governing documents. Now we can put them in order and we can see. Now, all of these do not apply to all organizations, and they certainly don't apply to the commission, so let's make this more specific to the commission. But let's keep in mind, anything higher on this chart is higher ranking, anything lower is lower ranking than those things above it. So the procedural rules and state statutes and federal code, that still applies to the commission, that's still your highest governing document. Articles of Incorporation don't apply, Constitution doesn't apply here. Now, your charter is in the nature of bylaws, so we're just gonna consider it bylaws for this presentation. And then your local rules of procedure are in the nature of special rules of order, so we'll put that there. Robert's Rules of Order is your parliamentary authority, and then standing rules are simply anything adopted that has continuing force in effect. So if you adopt a no-smoking policy, just for example, that's considered a standing rule, because it stays in effect until you rescind it or amend it. Okay, so this means that if something in the charter were to say, a particular board shall have five members, and then the local rules of procedure say, the board shall have nine members, which one governs here? I think we're all on the same page here, charter, right? Okay, so the charter would govern, and what happens to that rule in the local rules of procedure? Well, it's simply null and void, it's like it's not there because it conflicts. So in cases like this, I always tell organizations, don't panic and think, oh, no, we have nine members in reality, but now we've been following the wrong rule, what do we do? Well, the best thing to do here would be actually to amend the charter, to match what the practice is, if that's the will of the body. Now, otherwise, you know, you would be in conflict with that, and you don't want to be in conflict. So you have that option of amending the rules to match reality, or you have to adjust reality to adhere to the rules. Two choices there. Now, Robert's Rules of Order has a separate set of rules for, a modification of the rules for small boards and committees. So Robert's Rules of Order says, "In a board meeting where there are not more than about a dozen members present, some of the formality that is necessary in a large assembly would hinder business." Okay, so Robert's Rules of Order then goes on to list deviations from the regular rules that apply to small boards and committees. So as we go through the rules, just keep that in mind, I will let you know when this rule doesn't apply to your group, because it's a small board. Does that make sense to everybody? All right. Now, another thing we have to keep in mind are those specific rules. So I will teach you what Robert's Rules of Order says, but sometimes, as we go through, I will highlight after that, that there's a specific rule of your organization. Now, who here is in or has been in another organization that's not this commission, where you're a member, whether it's an HOA, or a national board, or anybody? Okay, so we see all the hands go up there. So this is why I don't teach specifically to your organization only, because I don't want you to leave here and go to another organization and say, oh, I spoke with a Robert's Rules of Order expert, and here's the rule. So I will let you know what Robert's Rules of Order says in general, and then it's important that you understand your specific rule and why it deviates from Robert's Rules of Order. Another reason for doing that is I don't want you to learn here a rule that I told you, and then go to Robert's Rules of Order and try to find it, and see it's not there, and say, oh, that guy must have not known what he was talking about. It's important to know where the rule came from, so that you can go and confirm it, because sometimes the most important thing about a rule is being able to show it to somebody, being able to find it and look it up. So to start with, you have to know where that rule is located. Okay, so now let's get into the actual meeting here, seeking recognition and obtaining the floor. So for seeking recognition, a member simply says, Madam Chairman, or Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, whatever the case may be, and the chair then says, the chair recognizes the member. So this is the proper way to seek recognition, and then the chair may use alternate language, such as the chair recognizes Commissioner Grant, or whatever the case may be. Now, in parliamentary law, the important thing is, especially for maintaining the quorum, is that members don't just speak whenever they want. You have to be recognized first to speak, and the only one that can recognize you is the chair of the meeting. So you simply request that, you seek recognition by saying, Mr. Chairman, and then the chair recognizes you. Now, what does that mean? Once recognized by the chair, the member who is recognized has the exclusive right to be heard at that time. So this is very important in parliamentary law. And notice, too, that it does not say the exclusive right to speak, does it? It says the exclusive right to be heard. So what does that mean? Well, if there are other members talking to one another, or any other commotion in the room, that would harm the member's right to be heard at that time, then the chair must put an end to that as well. So it's not just that you get to speak, but you also have to be heard. You have to have the ability inside that meeting room, the conditions have to be such that members can hear what you're saying. So an important distinction to keep in mind there, too, and one of the most powerful rights in parliamentary law as a member of an organization. So does the chair have the authority to decide who may speak? So we have A, yes, the chair controls which member can speak and at which times, or no, the chair must recognize any member who seeks the floor while entitled to it. So who thinks it's A? Interested to see what the chair thinks here.
I want it to be A, but my guess is it's B.
Okay, all right, who thinks it's B? About one and one, and the chair's thinking, he wants it to be A, but maybe it's B, so let's take a look, and yes, you are right, it is B.
No, no, no. You're absolutely correct.
The chair must recognize any member who seeks the floor while entitled to it. Now, you notice it says while entitled to it.
That's the key, while entitled.
Yeah, while entitled to it. You can't just be whenever you want, but if it's a debatable motion, and no one else is seeking to speak and debate. And now, are there other rules connected with debate as well? Like if a member has already spoken in debate on a particular motion, and then another member seeks the floor, but the member who had already spoken seeks the floor at about the same time, the chair would not recognize the member who had spoken already to that motion, until all other motions, all other members who wanted to speak to that motion but hadn't spoken to it yet, had an opportunity to speak to it their first time. So there are plenty of rules that govern this, but the chair doesn't have that ability to just decide, I don't want you to speak at this time. All right. So another question that comes up a lot, before we move on, any questions there on the seeking recognition? We're all clear on that one? Okay, so now let's look at, yes, go ahead.
When I've been reading this book, The Robert's Rules of Order, the twelfth edition there, section forty-nine, twenty-one, you reference, which talks about smaller boards which are twelve or more. It does, that's what you're referring to when you're giving us all this instruction? Correct?
So, so no. As I go through, I will highlight when it applies here, and when it applies there, and how it applies to your organization. So I will be covering both, highlighting those special rules as we go through, you know, those modifications of the rules, I will highlight. So are you asking specifically about one of these questions?
Yeah, because in that section where it says, whatever, four point two one in the book, and it talks about small boards, it says, you know, bullet points a list for small boards versus larger boards, it says informal discussion of a subject is permitted while no motion is pending.
Yes, so in a larger assembly, and Robert's Rules of Order defines a small board as no more than about a dozen members present. So in a large assembly, it's very important that there's not discussion without a motion pending. However, in a small board, it is considered that it can at times be helpful to that board, to relax that rule and allow discussion. However, when a motion is officially made in place before the assembly, then you have to follow the formal rules for adopting that motion. Now, so with your body, then, as a five-member body, it would fall under the small board rules. So informal discussion while no motion is pending would be.
Acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, it would be acceptable. It's important to keep in mind, though, that's when no motion is pending.
Correct.
So if we're talking about a motion is pending, and it's very common in bodies that are deliberating to have a motion pending, so it's important to keep that in mind. Just because you're a small board doesn't mean, oh, we can say whatever we want, whenever we want. It means that when there's no motion pending, you know, at those times, then informal consideration is considered valid for those.
Got it.
However, but keep in mind, if a motion is pending, and then a member wants to make an amendment, or a motion to postpone, or whatever.
Right.
There's no spot in there where someone can simply say, well, we're a small board, I'd just like to talk about my cat, or my dog, or something like that, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, we have a lot of discussion prior to our vote, so that would be where I would think the informal would be permitted, and that's kind of what we're doing.
So the discussion is.
But let me ask you, you still get recognized, even in the informal?
Yeah.
How does the informal work in terms of recognition?
Right, so it, and this comes down to also a board deciding what's working best for it. I know that might sound like stepping back from giving you a hard answer on the question, but some boards and some committees, they find that, yes, this works for us, we're not having a problem with it. But when I go to groups, no matter their size, when they're having trouble with members talking over one another and stuff like that, there are two main factors there. One is they might want to look at, we're handling business that is either controversial or heated enough, or, you know, enough volume of business, that we want to hold ourselves to the formal rules, and the board can decide that. Or we have, you know, another situation where what is happening is, no, the board is failing to actually put a proposal before the assembly. So in other words, there's a reticence to actually move forward with the item of business, so instead, they're just simply talking about it. And when we get into debate, we're gonna talk about the big distinction between those informal discussions and actual debate. The important thing of having a motion pending is that the chair knows what debate is in order and what debate is not in order.
Right.
So when we say, you know, informal discussion on a small board, we're not saying, just show up, we'll have a good time, we don't really need to conduct any business. No, we're saying, there are points in that meeting where it may be good for us to discuss something first, before a motion is made. Now, not before a vote is taken, because before we get to that vote, we need a motion so that we know specifically what we're discussing. But if we're talking about a specific issue in a small board, and we're not sure exactly how we want to crystallize this into a motion, well, then the chair has an option where he doesn't have to say, like in a large assembly, well, if there's no motion, we're moving on to the next item of business, the chair can allow some informal discussion, because within the rules and the parameters of that small, the nature of that small body. So that is okay. But once a member makes a motion, then there's really no distinction between a large assembly. So that little window that's very helpful for small boards is before an actual proposal is placed before the assembly. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Totally, thank you.
Yeah, okay, all right. So anything else on that before we move forward?
Nope.
All right, okay, so now, a common question is, who can amend the agenda? And this is just steeped in misunderstandings of the purpose of an agenda and how it works. So we want to highlight some of that here. Now, specific rules always come into play here. Do you have specific rules that says how your agenda can be amended and all that? So I did take a brief look at your rules, and your specific rules are pretty much conforming with Robert's Rules of Order and Robert's Rules of Order general take and principle on amending an agenda. So we're just gonna look at what Robert's Rules of Order says. Unless a pre-circulated agenda is formally adopted at the session to which it applies, it is not binding as to detail or order of consideration. So this is very helpful information, because a lot of people in a lot of different types of organizations, they're under the impression that an agenda was sent out, so now, if something's not on that agenda, then it can't be brought up. And that's why they always say, how do I get something on the agenda? Thinking that it's something that will be done before the meeting. However, I'll highlight this here, at the session to which it applies, this is where it's adopted. So when it is being considered for adoption, it is amendable, and it is debatable. So that's an opportunity for commissioners to fix that agenda the way they want it before it is adopted. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, no, I think that's what we do.
Yeah, yeah.
We break up the motion, are there any changes, additions?
Right, perfect.
I think that's what we do.
Good, make sure everyone's clear on that. So we'll look at adopting an agenda, we'll run through it kind of quickly. The chair would say, the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda, the proposed agenda has been distributed, and the question is now on its adoption. Chair could then say, is there any debate or amendment on the agenda? Which sounds essentially like what you've just explained there, so you're going through that process. Now, what's often done with these, if there isn't any, you know, changes to be made to them, the chair can just simply say, if there's no objection, the agenda shall be adopted. And then if no member objects, this is a way of saving time, and the agenda is adopted. Now, if a member did, let's say we have this, and this has nothing to do with your commission, but just an agenda that I have drafted up here, let's say we have this, seven items on this proposed agenda, and a member looks at this item number. Let's say we have this, uh seven items on, on this proposed agenda, and a member looks at this item number six and would like to move it up to right after number two, maybe make it the next, you know, the number three. So what we see in some organizations is they, they waste time not making a motion? Like saying, why can't we do this when, you know, after three, or wouldn't it make more sense and all, all this? And that's just delaying uh the motion. So instead, what a member, when they see this, should immediately do is just say, Madam Chairman or Mr. Chairman, wherever the case may be, once recognized by the chair, the chair recognizes the member, the uh member would then say, I move to amend the agenda by relocating item number six, rescind rule about overnight parking, to right after the report of the Parks Committee. If it receives a second, because it requires a second, then uh the chair says, it is moved and seconded to amend the agenda by striking out. And so what the chair is simply doing here, sometimes chairs think, well, isn't this repetitive, because we just heard that? It's just making sure everyone's clear on it. If everyone's clear on it, that's fine. But it's always, you know, this is how the chair places it before the assembly, making sure that everyone is clear on what just happened. You also notice some, some important language here, it is moved and seconded. If the chair is in the habit of saying this, uh which is the proper way of, of saying it, it reminds you to get that second. Because once you say it's moved and seconded, then it go, oh wait, it didn't actually get a second. Then you say, is there a second? Now, you also notice, in the rules, the modification of rules for small boards, uh no seconds are required. So under Robert's Rules of Order, you do not require a second for anything, and it would be inappropriate for the chair to ask for a second for anything. But you have specific rules, and your specific rules, although they don't spell out seconds are required, they strongly insinuate that seconds are required. Everything is assumed that seconds are required. So without a doubt, seconds are required for this board. But, don't go to another five-member board and say, I know Robert's Rules of Order, seconds are required here. Because in small boards and committees, seconds aren't required. But it is required for your organization, not under Robert's Rules of Order, but under your specific rules. Um and so another important point about the adoption of the agenda, yeah, can I ask you a question here?
So, so once they get the second, there's no, there's no call to, to, to vote?
Okay, so uh yeah, after, the member makes a motion, I move to amend the agenda in this manner. And then if there's a second, the chair says, it is moved and seconded, and then explains what the amendment is. Then it will be opened up for debate. Is there any debate? So members will debate that, and then uh from there, it will move to a vote. So, yeah, exactly, move to a vote, so definitely. So it moved to a vote on that. Let's say moving that six up to number three. So we go ahead and we do that, uh and it's adopted. And then, okay, so then let's say the chair says, alright, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes or the reception of this report. What, did we, did we do anything wrong there? Did we skip anything?
I'm sorry, could you ask that question again?
Yes, so we have a member say, I move to amend the agenda by making six number two, because I want to move it up. And the chair says, uh, and there's a second, alright, it's moved and seconded, move six up to number two. Uh is there any debate? Say there's a little debate, and the chair says, all those in favor of moving six up to two, say aye? Bunch of ayes, I mean, all those opposed say no, there are no noes. The chair says it's adopted, number six will move up to number two. The chair then says, the next item of business is the reception of the whatever committee report. Did we skip anything along that process?
Do we have to move all the other items down, or is it assumed? I don't know, it's a trick question.
No, 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 that's, that's a good question, and the answer is no, uh you know, we just use common sense. We know if we move six to number three, then everything else is reordered, that's fine. We don't have to be pedantic in that way. Yes.
Just a follow-on question to that, so if, what if there's another modification that we want to make?
So-
Are they voted on together or separately?
No, one at a time. So when one is made, that, because it's an amendment to the agenda. So, when that amendment is made, it, uh, when you have a main motion, and the adoption of the agenda would be a main motion. Uh then when you have a, a secondary motion, in this case, it's a subsidiary motion to amend, it stacks on top of it, imagine it like that. And it has to be uh disposed of before you can move back to this one. And so, and if someone wants to make another amendment, it's not in order at this time, you would have to decide this one first, because they're, they're amending the main motion, so it has to apply directly to the main motion.
We normally say, you know, you know, but we want to move this to AA and this to BB, and then we seek a motion to, to, you know, to, up to, to, to approve the uh agenda as amended. Is that, is that a way to do it, or do I still have to do the AA, get those first, and then go to the-
So there's, there's nothing wrong with that process. The reason uh we have the formal process is in case people differ on this. Does that make sense? Like if everybody's like, yeah, that's fine with me, why waste time going through the formal process? That's the theory of parliamentary law. However, if you had three different people wanting to do three different amendments that couldn't all align, because everybody wants theirs to be number one, then you need to take them one at a time, because that other process won't work. Does that make sense? So as long as it, it is feasible and it's saving time and everyone's clear on it, then that's fine. And when we get into unanimous consent, we'll see how useful that tool is. So, back to that question, when, when we, when we agreed to move six up to two, and then we moved on to the next item of business, what we missed was-
The agenda.
Uh, exactly. Amending the agenda does not adopt the agenda.
Right.
So after it's, after it's amended, it's only amended, and this applies with every main motion. And this is one of the main common uh oversights. It's something even, even parliamentarians, uh you know, when we do parliamentarian training, uh you know, sometimes will miss, uh is that, once you're finished with that amendment, you have not adopted that which is amended. You've only amended the proposal, and the proposal has not been adopted. So that way the chair would say, the question is now on the adoption of the agenda. This also allows members uh to know that they can offer now a, another different amendment uh to that agenda.
Yeah, but we have an amazing attorney, so if we mess up, she corrects us immediately.
She, yeah, she's gonna jump in and, and keep you straight on that? Alright. Um so after an agenda has been adopted by the assembly, no change can be made in it except by a two-thirds vote, a vote of a majority of the entire membership or unanimous consent. So that's the important thing about an agenda, is it locks that in, but not permanently. You can change it, but there's a vote required to change it. Now, you'll notice this, a vote of a majority of the entire membership. And you might wonder, why do we have majority in here and we have two-thirds in here? Well, these are two vastly different votes. Uh and if you're not familiar with the language of parliamentary law, you can miss um the, the actual implication here. Imagine you have an organization that has a thousand members, and only fifty of them show up at a meeting. So if those fifty show up and they adopt an agenda and then they want to amend it, it's going to require a two-thirds vote. Because a majority of the entire membership of a thousand-member organization would be anything over five hundred. So you need five hundred and one votes, and you only have fifty members present. So there's no way you're getting a vote of a majority of the entire memberships. The highest vote requirement in uh common parli- in, in Robert's Rules of Order, uh a vote of a majority of the entire membership. However, when you're on a five-member board, it's essentially the same as a majority vote. Because if all your members show up. So this is in there in Robert's Rules of Order, it's a very high voting threshold. However, when it's in a board, it's not that high. But the whole, but it makes sense, because the whole board is here. So, um there, there's a lot of power you have in a five-member board, because you can very easily reach a vote of a majority of the entire membership. So, we keep that in mind. So yes, you can uh amend that agenda by a vote of a majority of the entire membership. So in conclusion, who can amend the agenda? The assembly. And when we say assembly, we mean the body of members who assemble in a meeting, that's the commissioners. Alright, so now let's take a look, I think I hit one too many buttons, let me back up. Okay, um so this is from your local rules of procedure. Uh only items listed on the official agenda will be acted upon unless additional items are authorized by a majority of the commission. So we see this fits in with everything we've covered under Robert's Rules of Order. So you don't have, you know, a, a, a large deviation from Robert's Rules of Order here. So another question we often get about agendas is, is it in order to introduce business that is not on the adopted agenda? So this is after we've uh, you know, adopted an agenda. Of course, you have to look at your special rules, but what most people get confused here is they confuse agenda with notice. So we want to make sure we don't do that. Uh because, um let's take a look here, if a certain motion requires notice, it cannot be adopted without notice. If notice is required for a motion, then it simply can't be adopted if the notice wasn't given, and because of that, it would be out of order. Be out of order to consider it if we can't adopt it, because that essentially would be wasting the commissioner's time. Why are we considering this if we can't adopt it? So, notice would have to be given. Now that's different than being on an agenda. Uh so when something is on an agenda, even though it lets us know it's coming, it doesn't mean that notice is required for that motion or for any particular motion. So, um if notice is required, it doesn't matter if it's on the agenda or not, and that notice has to be given. Now, there's a difference also between public notice and notice to members. Now, when we talk about notice to members, of course, we're talking about the commissioners. So if public notice is required, it generally cannot be waived. But if notice to members is required, the rules may specifically provide for suspending the notice requirement. Uh and in, under Robert's Rules of Order, if all the members are present, then they can suspend a notice requirement, because notice um protects absentees. So, uh these are two specific, specifically different things though. Public notice is a different thing. I haven't seen anywhere where that can be suspended, because, you know, all of the members of the public are not going to be there and, and authorizing it. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. Any questions on that before we move on?
I have one.
Yes?
So, and Lynn, maybe this is for you. So if, if somebody brought up something that they wanted to add to the agenda, how do we know if it needs to be noticed or not?
Can I be recognized, man? Um, so it's, it's usually statutory or contractual. So, you know, if it's something related to land use, if, or, or, you know, a taking or something, obviously that's going to have to be noticed. An ordinance has to be noticed.
Okay.
And sometimes contracts require us to provide a certain type of notice. But for the most part, I would say most of the things, you know, it's a better practice
Yep.
to, to formally put it on an agenda for memorial, memorialization purposes, but it's not always a mandate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's a very, very important practical question as well, is if, if you know something might come up, then it's a good thing to, you know, refer to your, your city attorney and say, what's the proper way to do this? It doesn't need notice, and even if it doesn't, is it better? And you know, it, because if it can't wait, then it can't wait. You know, if notice is required, it's too bad if it can't wait. But if it can't wait, uh, uh, but if it can, if it can wait, and you can, you can notice it, and you're questionable about whether notice would be a good idea or not, then you can always err on the side of caution there and say, okay, well, let's, you know, notice this, but-
And I think, and I think that's what we would do, because I, I, as you were saying it, I was just thinking, a lot of the stuff that we, we talk about in the commission, uh we allow the public to comment on. And so if we go out of order and we don't notice it, it may be a topic that people wanted to come to the meeting and, and weigh in.
Yeah, exactly, because the, the rules just give you that boundary. Uh but you can always decide as, as a group of commissioners to even expand that, you know, boundary. To say, well, we, we don't want to do it this way, or maybe we'll, you know, we'll debate it here, but we want to postpone it until the next meeting, or something like that, you know, you always have that option. Alright, so we're going to look at making points of order. So we're going to start off with this important question. What's the purpose of a point of order? A, to get business back on track, B, to object to a particular action, C, to point out a violation of the rules, or D, to stop a member from speaking? What is the purpose of a point of order? So who thinks it's A, by show of hands? A, alright, get business back on track, we have two there. How about B, to object to a particular action? Alright, C, to point out a violation of the rules? Okay, we have one there, maybe one and a half. Split your vote between A and C, yeah. Alright, D, to stop a member from speaking? Alright, so let's take a look at our answer. Yes, it is to point out a violation of the rules. So uh, uh parliamentarian friends and I often joke about this being highly misused. People will say point of order, and then maybe they just want to speak in debate, or point of order and they have a question, you know. And so i- it's used oftentimes when it's not a point of order. Just keep in mind, a point of order means point out a, a violation of the rules. So, you know, if you're a member and you see a rule being violated, what do you do? And this is where I run into groups, uh two members will say, hey, they did this in the meeting and they can't do that, can they? I'm like, no, they can't do that. That was wrong, wasn't it? Yeah, that, that was wrong. And they say, uh, okay, so what do we do about it? I'm like, well, you go back in time to when it actually happened, and you raise a point of order, you know. That, don't, don't wait. If you think it's wrong, don't wait until after the meeting, I'm going to talk about how wrong I think this is. Do it at the time. Alright, so who can make a point of order in a board or committee meeting? So, we're talking about, maybe this is a board meeting, maybe this is the ABC committee meeting, who can make a point of order in that meeting? Anyone in attendance in a meeting, A. B, any commissioner or staff member. C, any member of the body that is meeting. Or D, only the member who has been assigned the floor. So who thinks it's A? How about B? C? Okay, we have four Cs, uh and D, only the member who's been assigned the floor. Alright, so, we're going to go with, yes, everyone got it right, it's exactly right. So it's uh any member of the body that is meeting. And so in a committee meeting, if you're a member of that committee, you can raise a point of order. So in the commission, commissioners have that right to raise a point of order. Now, who can second a point of order? Any member except the presiding officer, anyone in attendance, any member of the body that is meeting, or none of the above. Who thinks it's A? How about everybody shout out what you think it is?
None of the above, I don't think it requires a second.
None of the above? Alright, absolutely. Can't trick this group, it's D, none of the above. Because, as you mentioned, it doesn't require a second. So that is, that is your right as a member, and no one has to second you with it. If you think the rules are being violated, then you can make that point of order. Now, what happens after a point, after a member states a point of order? A, the chair makes a ruling on the point. B, members debate the point of order. C, the chair asks the secretary to read the pertinent rule. Or D, the point of order is followed unless there is an appeal. So who thinks A on this one? The chair makes a ruling on the point. Chair thinks so? Alright.
I think so.
How about three, okay. Anybody think B? How about C? B?
Maybe B.
Maybe B?
Maybe C.
May- maybe B or C?
Well, we don't have a secretary.
How about D?
A, B, or clerk.
Well, this is in, in general.
Or the city attorney.
Okay, so our correct answer here is A, the chair makes a ruling on the point. So, that's the chair's duty. Whenever you make a point of order, it can't be ignored. The chair has to make a ruling on that point. So, uh we'll get into how that's done in, in another couple slides. So, points, point of order is one of those very helpful tools that you, you want to have in your parliamentary toolbox there. So, um, a few important points about it. It's used to point out a violation of the rules, keep that in mind. It can be made by any member, does not require recognition, which means if someone else has the floor, if someone else is speaking, and you see a, a, a need for a point of order and it can't wait, then you have every right as a member to um interrupt that individual with uh your point of order. And it normally must be timely. So this is very important. This means if you wait, it's just too late. So with this rule, if you wait, it's too late, then we see you can't hesitate. You have to do it right then, or not at all, in most cases. Okay, so don't hesitate. Now, uh there are several reasons members tend to hesitate, and one of those is they don't know if it's accurate or not. They're not sure. Well, we don't want to get caught on that. If you think that it's a violation, then you should raise the point of order. If, if, if it's large enough of a violation, you know, the, the simple, simple little um flaw in, in the procedure's not going to hurt anything. But if you think, okay, this is, this is a violation that I need to, to bring up, uh it's better to err on the side of caution there and bring it up, simply because um if it's, if you wait, it may be too late.
It's just a quick question. As I recall, if you are making a point of order on a rule, the person making the point of order has to say what rule's been broken.
So-
Right, they have to say, they're, they're, whatever the rule is, they have to articulate the rule.
Yeah.
It's not up to the chair to figure out what rule.
Yeah, yeah, you don't just say point of order, deal with that. Yeah, e- exactly. However, you don't, uh it should be clear that you don't have to know the rule or where it is, but if you think that you're violating the rule. You know, like if, if, you know, if somebody does something in here uh that you think is a violation of the rules of decorum, but you don't know, you can't cite a rule specifically, but you're pretty sure that violates it, then you raise the point of order. You don't have to say, oh, it's in section four of this, you don't ever, yeah, exactly.
They have to say, you're violating the rule against improper decorum, whatever the, whatever.
Exactly, you have to, you have to do that. So that the chair can validly make a, a ruling on that. Okay, so a member says point of, point of order, that's all you do. Uh then the chair, um, you know, under the formal process, the chair would then say the member will state the point. However, as a parliamentarian, I see nothing wrong with a member saying point of order and then stating the point. A lot of times, that's the most efficient. Now, by the rules, a member would say point of order, the chair would then say the member will state a point. So if someone does say point of order and doesn't state the point, then the chair should follow up with, uh the member will state the point. Uh now a member then said, may say, here's an example, a member may not speak against another member in debate. So let's say a member was just saying something bad about one of the commissioners, one commissioner talking bad about another one. So, uh, the, the member, A, any member makes this point. So now, the chair, remember, has to make a ruling on this point. Either well-taken or not well-taken. So if the chair decides that it's well-taken, then that means that the chair agrees that the rules are being violated. And then the assembly must follow the, that rule going forward. And the chair would probably advise the member not to use that type of language, you know, uh toward a, another commissioner. So, for our example here, uh the chair would say, the point is well-taken, members are reminded to refrain from speaking against other members. You also notice something very important here is that uh one of the, the rules of parliamentary procedures, the chair always refers to himself in the third person. So the chair doesn't say I, and the chair doesn't refer to other members as you. So the reason for this is that if you say, uh, you know, I'm ruling your motion out of order, or something like that, it feels more personal, you know, or I, hey, I'm going to tell you again, don't say this. It feels more personal, whereas instead, the chair, you know, the chair would say, the chair will remind the member that, because- the chair will remind the member that, because the, the chair should be seen as the position, not as the individual. Does that make sense to everybody? Like, you may, you may have a, a personal, you know, conflict with another person in an organization, or that it's on a board, or a committee with you, or something like that. But none of that comes into play when you are chairing the meeting. So you refer yourself as the chair in, in the third person.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
I apologize, I may have missed this, you probably said it.
That's fine.
Didn't catch it. Is the chair allowed to do this point of order thing, himself or herself?
So the chair can raise a point of order from, from the chair. So normally, it wouldn't take the same, the chair wouldn't say, point of order, you know, the chair would simply make a ruling on it. You know, we just jump to that. But yeah. But it is, in parliamentary law, it is, uh, considered that the chair has the exact same right to make a point of order.
Okay.
However, from being in that chair, it's, it's gonna look a little different. So, um, Robert's Rules of Order says, this is a quote from Robert's Rules of Order, and when, when we have these quotes up here like this, you'll notice on the bottom right, there's, uh, a citation of where you can find this in Robert's Rules of Order. This is the 12th edition. And every paragraph in the 12th edition of Robert's Rules of Order looks like this. Uh, it has the section number, in this case, it's 23, and then a colon, and then it has the paragraph number inside that, uh, section. Um, like Bible verses. Okay, so, here we see it says, when a member thinks that the rules of the assembly are being violated, he can make a point of order. Now, there's a very important word in here, and that's thinks. So it goes back to what we said, you don't have to be sure. You know, but if you genuinely think, then you have that right to raise a point of order. Now, we're gonna move into appeal. So this, this follows point of order because the natural question is, what if the chair makes a ruling on the point of order, and a member of the assembly doesn't agree with the chair's ruling? Then what happens? So, Robert's Rules of Order says, by electing a presiding officer, the assembly delegates to him the authority and duty to make necessary rulings on questions of parliamentary law. So this is very important to keep in mind. Why is the chair making rulings, you know, for this body? Because the body decided, you know, under its rules, and the body decided that, you know, this individual is the chair. So this individual basically saves the assembly time. Instead of us talking about what's right and wrong, we're gonna trust the chair to make an informed decision and make a ruling on anything that comes up in the meeting. Robert's Rules of Order goes on to say, but any two members have the right to appeal from his decision on such a question. Okay, so why does it say any two members? Let me see if that's highlighted. Why would it say that? Instead of any member? Simply put, an appeal requires a second. So, a point of order does not, but an appeal requires a second. So if a member says, I appeal from the decision of the chair, the chair should look for that second. And then can even ask for a second. Is there a second? If there's no second, then it dies for lack of a second. But if there is a second, then the chair would process the appeal. So, what happens when an appeal is made and seconded? A, the ruling of the chair is reversed. B, the chair must reconsider his decision. C, the question is vested in the assembly for final decision. Or D, a committee is formed to decide the matter. So what letter do you like out of there? Anybody wanna volunteer an answer?
C.
C, question is vested in the assembly for final decision. Anybody have a different one? We all good with C? Alright, yep, absolutely. The question is vested in the assembly for final decision. So, the principle here really is, if we look back at some of those rules that we saw, is that the assembly decides everything. It's up to the assembly what happens in the assembly meeting. But, the assembly does not waste its time considering every single point that comes up, every single question of parliamentary procedure. The best way to do it is have a qualified and skilled chair make rulings on each of these. And we can sit back, and we can just make sure that we agree with the chair's ruling. And most of the time, we probably will, if the chair's doing a good job. But in those cases where we have a doubt, we can appeal that decision. Alright, it's a, and this is just the general rules here. We'll get into some specific rules in just a second, but we're looking at General Robert's Rules of Order. If the presiding officer wants to speak in debate on an appeal, does he have to leave the chair? So I'm gonna give you the answer on this one. It's no. So, um, under general, uh, parliamentary law in Robert's Rules of Order, when the chair in any size assembly speaks on an appeal, he is not speaking on the merits of a substantive matter before the assembly. He is speaking on procedure, and that's the chair's purpose. So the chair does not have to step down. Now, here's another important point, uh, also, no matter what, uh, okay, well, let's just look at this question. If the chair is a member of the assembly and his vote would affect the outcome, can he vote on an appeal? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Everybody got that one? Alright, so what vote is required to overturn the ruling of the chair? A, a majority in the negative. B, two-thirds in the negative.
Two-thirds in the negative.
Two-thirds in the negative?
I would guess majority.
Majority in the negative?
Just majority.
Majority, alright, so let's take a look. Majority. So very interesting that the chair
Can we go back?
The chair, the chair thought, let's have that at two-thirds.
I will appeal that, wait a minute.
Appeal that decision. Yeah, so it is, uh, a majority. So why a majority in the negative? Because the chair, the question is put as, shall the decision of the chair stand as the, the decision of the assembly? Or shall the decision of the chair be sustained? So you have to vote against the chair, um, to, to have the effect of overturning the chair. So it would have to be a majority voting in the negative, otherwise it would be adopted. Alright, so, by, uh, this is from the local proc- uh, rules of procedure. So we can look at how this differs from what we just learned about Robert's Rules of Order. By a motion and second, so that's the same. Uh, a decision of the chair on a point of order may be appealed to the commission. Okay, that's the same. And without debate. So that's the issue here. This is what's different here. Normally, we say, okay, an appeal is debatable. But your rules say, there's no debate. So, the chair sells, shall submit the, uh, to the commission the question, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? And the commission shall decide by a majority vote. So, this, this is e- essentially what we have in Robert's Rules of Order. Now, uh, the big difference there is without debate. Now, because it says without debate, that doesn't mean that members are deprived of the information necessary to make the decision. And that's an important distinction here, too. The chair still, even when it's not debatable, should explain what the parliamentary situation was. What the chair's ruling was, if it came from a ruling on a point of order. Or, eh, keep in mind also that the chair can simply make a ruling without a point of order, and that too is subject to appeal. So, the chair should explain what the ruling is, and make it clear to all members what the appeal was, and then make it clear to all members what the effect of their vote would be. Yes, we have a question?
Question, in the, in an instance where that might happen, can we refer to the city attorney for, uh?
So that's a great question, yeah. And Robert's Rules of Order specifically states, and, and mentions a parliamentarian i- in this situation, but the, the city attorney or, or, you know, any knowledgeable staff member or pertinent, you know, information coming from anyone in that situation would apply. But Robert's Rules of Order specifically states that before making a ruling, the chair, uh, can consult with, uh, a parliamentarian, and that would apply to any other, uh
Member as well?
Yeah, a member as well. A member had, you know, certain information that the chair felt was, was necessary or helpful in making the ruling.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's take a look at what an appeal would look like in practice. Uh, the member simply says, in this, after the ruling, says, I appeal from the decision of the chair. And, then we look for that second, because it requires one. And then the chair says, the decision of the chair is appealed from. It's usually debatable, however, under your rules, it's not. Uh, and a majority to overturn the chair's ruling is Robert's Rules of Order, uh, vote requirement on it. Alright, any questions for, with anything we've covered before we move on to making motions? Alright, here we go. So what is a motion? An important question we wanna cover. So a motion is a formal proposal that the assembly takes certain action. And that could be a wide range of actions, but it is that formal proposal to do so. A motion presents a yes or no question for the assem- for the assembly to decide. And for that purpose, a motion is als- also, um, excuse me, for that reason, a motion is also referred to as a question. So when you're reading Robert's Rules of Order, you may see question in there, and just think motion. Okay, so it often talks about, you know, the question is now on this, and the question is, shall it be adopted or not? That's what we mean when we say question. So, a motion is out of order if the same effect would be obtained by not adopting the motion. So the chair can rule a motion out of order if the effect would be the same as not adopting it. So let's take a look at an example, because that can be a little confusing. If there's a motion that the fundraising committee shall not be instructed to organize a car wash, this would not be in order. Because if you didn't adopt the motion, they wouldn't be instructed to organize a car wash. But if you did adopt the motion, they wouldn't be, uh, instructed to organize a car wash. However, if we move the not over, when, if we move it down the line a little bit in the sentence, that the fundraising committee shall be instructed to not organize a car wash, this would be in order. Does everybody see the difference here? Because this would be, actual instructions would be given to that committee to not do something. And that's different, because if that was not adopted, then those instructions would not be given to that committee to not do it. But in our first case, you don't do anything if it's adopted, you don't do anything if it's lost in, in regard to this particular question. Alright, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so now, there are three steps to bringing a motion before the assembly. And, you know, we often think of these big agenda items when we talk about motions. You know, this resolution that's gonna come forward, or some big amendment to our governing documents, or something like that. But, a point of order is a motion. Uh, an appeal is a motion. A motion to recess, there are many, many, many motions in parliamentary law. Uh, the back of Robert's Rules of Order lists 98 specific motions by name. Uh, so there are many motions that can come up. That's, that's why it's important for us to keep in mind how a motion becomes, comes before the assembly. First, a member makes a motion. That's easy to remember. Number two is even easier to remember, because the second item is a second. A member seconds the motion. And then number three is the chair states the question on the motion. Now, this means that the chair simply states what happened in the first two steps. The chair says it is moved and seconded. So, uh, once again, no second is required for a motion that is made by direction of a committee. So, uh, just as long as the committee consists of more than one person. So, um, that's a rule in Robert's Rules of Order, because, you know, it is, um, uh, i- it is considered that, uh, it, the, a, a group of individuals that the assembly has entrusted to make a decision is recommending this proposal, so it doesn't require a second. Now, in small boards and committees, no seconds are required. We covered this before. But your specific rule, uh, you know, nullifies this. So you do require seconds by your specific rules. Now, what happens if it's discovered that an adopted motion never received a second? Let's say, uh, a member makes a motion, and it's not seconded, the chair places it before the assembly, nobody caught it, or nobody said anything, and then, uh, it's debated and it's adopted. And now, later, someone realizes, oh, that one didn't receive a second. So we have A, the motion is null and void. B, the motion must be ratified at the next meeting. C, it was never before the assembly and never adopted. Or D, the lack of second is immaterial. Who thinks it's A, null and void? How about B? We got a B? Couple, three Bs? The motion must be ratified at the next meeting. How about C, it was never before the assembly and never adopted? Got a maybe on that one. How about D, the lack of a second is immaterial? Alright, we have the chair with that one, and the lack of a second is materi- is immaterial, is correct. Yes, so, a second simply allows the chair to know whether or not the assembly wishes it to come before the, uh, bu- before the assembly for consideration. Once it has come before the assembly for consideration, it's too late to not second it, in other words. You know, we've, we're already in consideration of this. So that second, i- in those times, uh, when you, when you are in a meeting and you see something die for lack of a second, you know, you can think, oh, think of all the time we saved, you know, by not, uh, considering that. But, um, once you already consider it, then it's simply too late. And if a motion is adopted, the assembly decided, yes, we all vote in favor of this, we want it. Parliamentary law's not gonna tell you, oh, you missed a step back there in some technicality. It's clear what the assembly wants, and we wanna preserve the will of the assembly in accordance with the rules. Alright, so after debate has begun, or if there's no debate, after any member has voted, the lack of a second has become immaterial, and it is too late to make a point of order that the motion has not been seconded. So once again, this is why we say, most points of order must be timely. Like, if you catch it at that time, the chair is like, okay, yeah, it's moved and seconded, and, and starts to recognize it. You go, wait, 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 that point of order, that wasn't recognized. Then that's in order. Okay, if a motion is considered and adopted without having been seconded, even in a case where there was no reason for the chair to overlook this requirement, the absence, absence of a second does not affect the validity of the motion's adoption. Makes sense to everybody? Alright, so let's take a look at making a motion. I move that. So a member starts by saying, I move that. So this is not, once again, this is just not pedantic. Why do we wanna say this all the time? These are three magic words in parliamentary law. I move that. Because, you know, we may be having discuss- informal discussion, it may come out of a report, someone's reading a report and all that. But when the chair, or the secretary or the clerk, or experienced members hear, I move that, then everything stops in their mind, and they're like, okay, we have a motion coming now. Um, so a lot of people using a more informal process, you don't know when they made the motion or what the motion is. But it, when you hear, I move that, someone using the proper form, it makes it very clear for everyone involved. So it says, I move that, and then the member gives the exact wording of the motion after those three words. So, for example, I move that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Now, this is completely different for the ear of a chair and a secretary than someone just saying, you know, it, wouldn't it be a good idea to give them 100 bucks, you know, the, uh, ABC Foundation? Or shouldn't the ABC, this means nothing from a parliamentary standpoint, these words. But, I move that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Suddenly, the chair is called upon to see if there's a second for this and place it before the assembly. So sometimes, I move to is used especially with procedural motions, and this is fine, too. For example, I move to recess for 15 minutes. This to is a motion. And when there's a motion, the chair has to, you know, uh, address it immediately. Okay, so, after a member says, I move that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation, and there's a second, the chair then repeats what happened. It is moved and seconded that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Now, Robert's Rules of Order states, if a motion is offered in a wording that is not clear or that requires smoothing before it can be recorded in the minutes, it is the duty of the chair to see that the motion is put into suitable form, preserving the content to the satisfaction of the mover before the question is stated. So if the chair hears a motion and says, well, I don't understand what the effect of that motion would be, it's unclear to me, chances are, it's unclear to the other members of the assembly as well. But, the chair must make sure it's in a suitable form before allowing it to come before the assembly. So the chair, uh, oftentimes, what is, is, works great for the assembly is for the chair to recommend language, or point out what might be wrong with it, so that it can get into a suitable form. However, it's not up to the chair what the final language is, it's up to the mover to say, yeah, that's what I would do. So what I normally do when I'm serving as a parliamentarian, or when I'm, you know, presiding, uh, over a meeting, is, I will draft that language, and then I will say, is this suitable to the maker, you know? Alright, so clarity is the most important thing when we're making a motion. Because if there's no clarity on it, then we don't know what we're debating, we don't know what we're adopting. After it's placed before the assembly, then there are three steps to considering a motion. First, members debate the motion. Second, the chair puts the question to a vote. And then finally, the chair announces the result of a vote. So this is very important not to skip. Oftentimes, chairs will think, well, everybody saw the vote, or heard the vote, and they just skip that. But this is, number one, what makes it official, because you're, you are stating the result. But, uh, also, this gives members an opportunity to ensure that they agree with what you saw, you know, what, or what you heard in that vote, as the chair. Okay, so the chair puts the motion. And when we say puts the motion, we mean, put it to a vote. So, the question is on the adoption of the motion, that $100 shall be da- donated to the ABC Foundation. Those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say no. Of course, you have to wait in between there to get the ayes, and then to get the noes. This is how a voice vote is taken. The chair then announces a result. The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. Or the chair says the noes have it, and the motion is lost. Now, uh, sometimes, um, i- if you're taking a, a rising, uh, I mean, a show of hands, you would say, those in favor, raise your hand, hands down. Those opposed, raise your hands, hands down. Um, then you can announce, there are three, uh, in favor and two against, the affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. And, here we have, the chair shouldn't call for abstentions. So, this is something that's very clear in parliamentary law. You have a specific rule about it, so we're gonna get to that in just a moment. But let's look at this, under parliamentary law, how do abstentions affect the result of a vote? If you look it up in Robert's Rules of Order, what is it gonna tell you about abstentions? A, abstentions count as a vote in favor. B, abstentions count as a vote against. C, abstentions aren't allowed. Or D, abstentions don't affect the vote at all. Who likes which letter here?
I'm thinking it's B.
B? Okay, abstentions count as a vote against. Anybody else? Anything different?
Maybe D?
Maybe D? Abstentions don't affect the vote at all? All right, let's take a look. It's actually, abstentions don't affect the vote at all. So this is, nice, nice work. This is, we're keeping score over here.
But I wanna go back to just something you said.
Yeah.
When we are, on a roll call, it's simple. But we also, we also do, you know, call hands and those kinds of votes. Shouldn't the chair say the motion is adopted three to two? Should they give the vote? Because in your thing, you just say, the majority has it. So...
Yeah, so, under, under just the common parliamentary law, the way of doing it is not giving those numbers. And the reason for that is, there are different sized assemblies. You know, you can have an assembly of a hundred people where this is really gonna slow down every vote, you know, to do everything. We're gonna do that. So, it's just not workable. And these rules are for each assembly. Now, if you have a practice of announcing that, there's nothing wrong with that. You know, and you should probably stick with that practice because, you know, it's not, it's not prohibitive in its nature. Because it's not taking time.
It makes it easier for the clerk.
Yeah, exactly.
As I said, it's three to two, and then someone said, no, no, I voted for it. Said, I know it's four to one.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, in this size, in this body, it makes sense to do that because you can easily do it. It's just as easy as taking a voice vote, you know, in my opinion. So, a lot of boards, you know, of this size, or even, you know, two or three times this size, will simply, you know, do a show of hands because you can quickly, you know, calculate what that is. So, another important thing, when you're, even when you're doing that, is to always call for the negative vote and always tell, tell chairs to do this. Now, the rules state this specifically too. But if you, okay, all those in favor and you have, you know, five hands, but you're actually taking a vote. You're not asking for unanimous consent. You're taking a vote. You took the aye vote. You should go ahead and take the no vote as well. Because after the meeting, you don't want someone, even, even a member of the public observing, you know, to be asked, was it adopted or lost?
Yeah, we're all in favor, any opposed?
Yeah, yeah, well, you don't want someone saying after the meeting, well, of course, it was adopted. They didn't let anybody vote against it. You know, you wanna make sure that. But also, a member has a right to vote against it.
That's a good idea, I'm gonna remember that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So, it's just part of the process. And you wanna do it the same way every time. Okay. So, under Robert's Rules of Order, we have this. The chair does not call for abstentions in taking a vote since the number of members who respond to such a call is meaningless. To abstain means not to vote at all. And a member who makes no response if abstentions are called for, abstains just as much as one who responds to that effect. Because our answer is, an abstention does not affect the result. Now, we have to look at your specific rules though. I want you, I want you to remember this as the actual Robert's Rules of Order because this is gonna apply in any association you go to. But, you have a specific rule. And this is where you're gonna find the answer to that rule. A commissioner's silence will be counted as an aye vote. Okay, so this means a vote in favor.
So if it's two to two with one abstention, it passes?
So if it's two to two and one abstention, it would be three to two. Correct.
Yes, but we really can't abstain from voting. We don't, we are not permitted to unless we have a reason. And then we have to fill out a form. So, it's not, this doesn't really apply to us.
If I'm abstaining because it's a, I have a client, or whatever it is, that shouldn't be applied as an aye vote.
No, it's not.
Yeah, no, and the rule goes on. The rule is not just this. The rule goes on to, to cover that. Yeah, and it is specifically for that purpose. And so, yeah, it's just important that you understand that this rule is in there. You know, in your, your, your rules also state that a member must vote.
Right.
You know, so you must vote. So what happens if you don't vote? Is a valid question under parliamentary law. And it's answered here, that it counts as an aye vote. Yeah, does that make sense to everybody?
Thank you.
But yeah, there isn't, there's an option under your rules to simply not vote, unless you're required to under your rule. All right. So now we get to unanimous consent. This is, this is a marvelous time-saving mechanism in parliamentary law. You're probably familiar with it. And so I just wanna cover it briefly. This is where the chair says, if there's no objection, such and such will happen. And then, waits for an objection or asks, is there any objection? If there's no objection, then the chair simply declares that that happens, whether it's the adoption of the motion or anything. Anything that the assembly could authorize by a vote, they can authorize by unanimous consent. And so the principle in parliamentary law is that there's no reason to go through the formal process if there's no objection to a particular matter. So, an important element of this is, any member has a right to object. So how do you object? Simply say, I object, or objection. So, just run through this. The chair would say, is there any objection? This is if there is any objection, just announce it. But to object, a member can simply say objection, or I object. Now, you don't have to explain your objection. But even more so, it's not in order to explain your objection. All you're doing is objecting. You're not necessarily objecting to the proposal itself. You're objecting to skipping the process. Maybe you want it to come before the assembly. Maybe you want it to, you know, have debate on it and all that. So, you're objecting to adopting it without that process. So, here's another question. If a motion is lost at one session, can it be made again at next month's session? Yes or no? All right, you had a little time.
Wouldn't it depend on the topic? If it's quasi-judicial, we couldn't bring that up again. But if it's something we wanted individually, right, we could probably bring that up.
So we wanna, in this question, we just wanna look at the general. Just in general, if it's, if it doesn't have any other special stipulations on it or anything like that, just, we brought it up, yeah. So, yes, we can. You know, some people, you know, get, fall into that trap of thinking, oh, we already decided this. Well, you decided that last session. And, and maybe, next month's session, maybe you would want to. So let's see what Robert's Rules of Order says about this. Any motion that is still applicable can be renewed at any later session except where a specific rule prevents its renewal. Now, we're talking about a motion that is lost. Lost means that it was put to a vote and it wasn't adopted. So, it's, you know, it was lost at that session, decided not to do it. Now, at the next session, it can be brought up again. All right, if a motion is made and seconded, can the chair rule the motion out of order?
No.
All right, so we have a no, we have a...
I think they can.
All right, the chair has a yes. So a different perspective from the chair, yes. The chair can rule a motion out of order. So, can the chair, following up on that? Can the chair decide by his own preference which motions he will or won't allow?
No.
All right, so everybody says no on that one. So it's a clear distinction here and an important one. If the, there are two major things. If the motion is not clear, then the chair can rule it out of order and should. Because, yeah, and also, if the motion is out of order. If it's something that is out of order. Now, in either of these cases, the chair should explain the ruling. So the chair should say, that motion's out of order. You know, not simply say, that motion's out of order, sit down, anybody else, you know, wanna make a motion. Instead, the chair would say, the chair must rule the motion out of order because, and then cite the reason. Now, can, what can the members do if they don't agree?
Two vote.
What's that?
Two of us can appeal.
Exactly. You can appeal from that. That is a ruling. If you make a motion, the chair says, that motion's not in order because of whatever reason, you can appeal that. And then it will go to a vote of the assembly. All right, the chair, here's the rule. The chair must state the question on a motion immediately after it's been made and seconded unless he is obliged to rule it out of order or unless, in his opinion, the wording is not clear. So once again, if the wording's not clear, the chair has a duty to work with that member to see if the member's intention can be put into a proper motion. If it can't, then the chair just has to rule it out of order. Okay. Now, when we have a proper motion, the motion comes first. So, five dozen doughnuts shall be provided at each weekend picnic. Why does the motion come first and why is that so important in parliamentary law?
Because there'd be no doughnuts left.
Yeah, exactly. Motion comes first, then debate. Because debate must be germane to the pending question. So think about it. What if we don't have a pending question but we're debating? Well, there are no boundaries for that debate. You're talking about doughnuts. You can go off talking about something else, or the weekend picnic. Or maybe we shouldn't have the weekend picnic. Or the weekend picnic costs too much. Or, the weekend picnic should be limited to these number of people. Or the weekend picnic should be held here. We have to have a specific question. So the chair would say, you know, debate on where the weekend picnic should be held is not in order at this time. Because this is about supplying doughnuts to the weekend picnic.
We need a second.
What's that?
We would need a second before we discuss.
Yeah, well, we, we, you're talking about what, on the, on the location idea? Or...
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, 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 exactly. So what we're saying is, that we're focused on, yes, this motion will require a second. And then you would place it before the assembly. And then, at that point, you have parameters on what is in order or not. Because people might have a lot of thoughts about the weekend picnic. But what moves businesses along, business along, is the only thing that is in order at this time is whether or not to, you know, that five dozen doughnuts shall be provided at the picnic. Does that make sense to everybody? So you're, you're streamlining your focus. Okay, now let's get into debate. This is a fun one here. So what is the purpose of a meeting? Anybody wanna throw out an idea?
Well, to come to a consensus.
Come to a consensus. All right. So, a meeting is for the transaction of business, is what we say under parliamentary law. A meeting is for the transaction of business. A meeting is not for discussing issues or talking about problems. So a lot of people pause there and they say, wait, I thought that's what a meeting was for. That's what we do at our meetings. We discuss issues and we talk about problems. That's not the purpose of the meeting. Purpose of a meeting is the transaction of business. So, debate is an essential part of the transaction of business. So it is essential. However, idle discussion is a major hindrance to the process. So we have to, there has to be some demarcation here between debate and idle discussion. So how do we determine that? What's the difference between discussion and debate? So, yes.
Just a point. I've served on a very big public board and a bunch of private boards, retailers. And, we're not bound by the same rules in the, in the private sector. Like, we can openly have discussions with staff and with other board members at any time about anything. But, as I've come to find out in my nine or ten months here, I can't do that with, with my, my fellow commissioners and the mayor. I mean, it violates the sunshine law. So, this is the session where we can discuss things.
Correct, absolutely. So what we're talking about, so right now, we're, we're, you know, delineating between debate and discussion. So let's look at our next slide. Because I think this speaks exactly to what you're saying, your underlying question here. Debate is discussion. So that's where it gets confusing. We just said debate is good, discussion is bad. Debate is discussion. However, debate is discussion on the merits of the pending motion. So, when you come here, let's say you're not allowed to talk about this issue out there, but in here, you are allowed to talk about it. However, it has to pertain specifically to the pending motion. And not only pertain to it, but the merits of whether or not it should be adopted. So if we're looking at, at adopting some program and you just wanna talk about some aspect of the program or something that is not involved with whether or not it should be adopted, that would essentially be a waste of the assembly's time. It's like, okay, at this point, we are just looking at that. So that's the, that's the power of debate. Is it is, it is focused on the merits of the pending motion. Does that make sense? Okay. So, a few characteristics about debate. It must pertain to the proposal under consideration, to whether the proposal under the consideration should be adopted. It must pertain to a matter that is pending. So you can't tell, if you're covering five items in this meeting and you're on item number three, you can't go back and talk about item number two. You can't skip ahead and talk about four or five. So it has to be pending. You cannot attack a member or question a member's motives in debate. Very important. In regards to a member, debate cannot contain words such as lie, liar, or fraud and cannot impugn a member's character. And debate alternates between those in favor and those opposed. Okay, so, this is a fun little round that I call, can you say this in debate? So imagine a motion is pending. We're gonna give you some words here and we're gonna ask you your opinion on, can you say this in debate, under the rule, under Robert's Rules of Order?
Lynn says that all the time.
Yeah, well...
Yes, you can.
She might wanna weigh in on this.
You can say this, it's a bad idea.
This motion is a horrible idea. Who thinks you can say this, yes? All right, who has said this?
I might have said it. I've used terminology like that, horrible.
You're a har- I can't say, you know, that's a stupid idea that you're coming with. I'm allowed to say, it's a horrible idea. But I can't insult you for making, I think that's the rule.
All right, so you're going with, yes, you can say it. Any noes?
Yes, it's only a yes for me.
Yes, okay. All right, so our answer here is yes. Yeah, you all got it. And the idea here is, it's the idea. And I tell people, you know, imagine you leave these chambers. You go out in the parking lot and you say, man, that motion was a horrible idea. And then your fellow commission member says, why didn't you say that in the meeting? If you said that, I wouldn't have voted in favor of it. This is your opportunity to express your feeling on that motion. And, this is the time to do it. If you think it's a horrible idea, don't keep that in your pocket. So, yes, you can say that. Now, can you say this in debate? This idea will never work. This idea will never work. What if it's worked in other places? What if it's never failed before? Can you say, this idea will never work?
Well, no, because that's really your opinion about it, right? I mean, I would say maybe not.
Okay, so it's your opinion. Can you give your opinion in debate?
Yes, you can.
All right. So that's an important point. This is your opinion. With everything you see up here on the screen, put I think in front of it. I think this idea will never work.
Right.
Can you say, can you say what you think in this meeting? Yes, so you can say, I think this idea will never work. But you don't have to put the I think. You can just say, this idea will never work. We know that's your opinion and it is valid in debate. So yes, you can say that. Can you say, while I have the floor, I'd just like to take the opportunity to take, to thank all our volunteers for doing such a wonderful job at the voter registration drive last week. And I hope all of you will consider volunteering again in the drive we're doing next week. Can you say that?
No.
Anybody think, yes, you can say that in debate?
No.
All right, no, you can't. And so why? Because...
Must pertain.
Yep, must pertain to a matter that is pending. Because if everyone got up and did this, it slows down the meeting and we forget what the motion even is. All right. Can you say, before I talk about this motion, "Can you say, 'Before I talk about this motion, I'd like to say that the last motion was truly a great idea, and I'm glad we were able to adopt it.'"
No.
Short and sweet? Anybody? All right, no, we can't. Why can't we?
Because we've already passed that and we're debating something else.
Same, exact same reason. Must pertain to a matter that is pending. All right. "Can you say, 'If this motion is adopted, residents will leave town, not necessarily this month or next month, but eventually our population will decline as a direct result of this motion.'" Can you say that?
Yes.
Anybody say no? Do we put "I think" in front of it? Absolutely, that's your opinion. All right. Okay, so now, "Can you say this in debate?" I'm going to take a drink. "I feel that the chairman of the fundraising committee only wants to have this raffle because he wants to make a good impression before he runs for office in two months."
No.
Anybody think yes? All right, that is a no. So why is that one a no?
Because you're attacking that individual personally, and we don't even know what the subject matter is.
Attacking that individual? Yep. So you are questioning a member's motives?
Right.
Yeah, and this is where the chair should, should remind members that it is the motion that is under consideration, not the member who made the motion.
Is that door open?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we close that door? Do you mind? I'm sorry. I apologize, I should have gotten up and done that for you, actually. It's so loud. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, we have another one. "We all heard our fellow member, Mr. Jones, say that last year's raffle made money, but he knows that's not true, it lost money."
No.
Can you say this? Anybody think you can say this? What if you have receipts showing that it lost money?
Then you could probably say it.
It's the speech you can't say.
The speech, exactly. So what's wrong with our speech here? This is definitely a no. But he knows that's not true. When we say somebody said something, that they know is not true, what do we call them?
Calling them a liar.
One word for that, exactly. And so that's directly here. No matter how you try to frame it or couch it, you can't call someone a liar. Okay, tips for effective debate. State whether, excuse me, state whether you're for or against the motion, even if the chair recognizes you because you're in favor. It's still important that, that members, because members can get lost in the debate, you know, or whatever, but state whether you're for or against the motion. That gives perspective on what you're about to say. Now they understand it. Give your reasons for your position. Recognize counterpoints. So I always tell people in debate, don't say, "Oh, well, here's, here's a one weak spot. Well, maybe we'll just ignore it." No, you have to state that as well. You know, you say, "I understand that members are going to say, 'This is too expensive. However, here's what I think we're getting for our money.'" So that you're not, after you sit down in your debate, ambushed by somebody else, saying, "Yeah, but what about the cost?" You've already covered the cost. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, you know, think of anything you'd want to say in rebuttal and, and put it into your speech first go around. And urge support if desired. Actually urge your fellow commissioners to vote one way or the other, based on your opinion in debate. All right, now we'll take a quick look at germane debate. So let's, and these are just simple examples. Let's say there's a motion, someone moves that a new 60-inch TV be purchased for the lounge at a cost not to exceed $600. So that's seconded, placed before the assembly, members are debating it, and then a member says, "I move to amend by striking out for the lounge." That's seconded, and it's placed before the assembly. So what are we considering now? We're considering that amendment, to amend by striking out for the lounge. And let's say a member comes up in debate and says, "I don't think we have the money for a new television at this time." Is this debate in order or not?
Not yet.
Not yet? Anybody, anything else?
So all we're debating is for the lounge, right?
Correct. Correct. So everybody see what, what he's pointing out there? The pending motion, remember, it has to relate to the pending motion. The immediately pending motion. The immediately pending motion is amend by striking out for the lounge. So whether we have money for a television or not doesn't affect whether you want those words in here. So you have to focus your attention. This, because, in other words, we could spend half an hour debating whether or not to purchase a television while this motion to amend is pending, and we're not making any progress because it's not the pending motion. So you streamline all your focus on that motion. So this is not in order. Now, could someone say, "I think we need to know where the television is going to go, be, going to be used before we can authorize purchasing it." Is this in order?
Yes.
Right, yes, so this is in order, because it speaks directly to a reason to keep the language in. Now, say, the motion is that the old copy machine be sold on eBay. Now, let's say an amendment is, is proposed, to amend by striking out, sold on eBay, and inserting the words, "Donated to charity."